Five o'clock, we'll go ahead and start the public hearing. We're here tonight to have comments on our millage rate. We're keeping our millage rate at eight, which was same as it was last year. And we're hoping that for comments. We've had, this is our third and final public hearing. And immediately after this public hearing, we will go into a meeting to actually adopt our millage rate for our 2024. And well, Angie, how are you? Good to see you. We have our tax commissioner here. Let's see her. We have our tax assessor. We also have our tax assessor's office, our chief assessor, and she's here also. And they, in our last two meetings we've had, we did a good job answering any questions and going into details, you know, as far as the way the appraisals, how they came up with the evaluation of property, because a lot of people's appraisal did go up this year. And of course, we have no control over, you know, what your value is, your property, as far as whether you build a pool or new driveway or additions on your house. They have a process they go through that's set in stone by the state of Georgia. They follow that. And when that, that happens, you know, and then Angie, she's our tax commissioner, which is a total different job than the tax appraiser. So it's just, that's what we have these public hearings for. And there's, this year, you know, we had to advertise, as we have the last few years, that we advertise the property, our tax increase. And for those of you that have not, we've talked about this for weeks and weeks and weeks. We have to do that, whether the millage rate's up or down, if we collect more money than we received last year, which we will because of growth. And when you do that, the state of Georgia requires us to post that ad in the paper that, hey, we're having a tax increase. Well, they don't let us put in it right beside it on that same page and explain what that means. And it's kind of deceiving for some people, but we've, we've talked, everywhere I've been and talking, when I'm on the radio on Thursday mornings, I've tried to explain that to people. And I've had some people call, and if some people came in, you know, over the past few weeks and since the paper came out, and when they left, you know, they understood, you know, I mean, it's, and we've, we've done, actually, on some of our several parcels, Don has pulled and we've put, we've looked at and, you know, comparatively to large property owners, small property owners, middle, and most ninety, you know, about ninety percent of the ones we looked at, you know, your actual total bottom line, what you're going to write your, your final tax check for, will say the same, or a lot of them went down, you know, just a little, you know. So that's where we're at right now. And Don, you know, I'll do this like I did before, if you want to comment on what I'm saying here, and we'll let, we'll let Angie or whoever, you know, talk. I mean, we, and maybe you can just briefly go in detail, I mean, kind of like you did before.
Okay. This is for our 2023 milit rate increase, setting the milit rate, I should say, for 2023. And third pub, third and final public hearing, our other two public hearings was held a week ago, 11 a.m. and 6 p.m. So we have, after tonight's public hearing, have met the standards for the state's local government digest submission process. Thankfully, we have so many experts here, and I'm sure they would just love to chime in at any moment. The real and personal property, we have, if you saw in the paper, the unincorporated and the incorporated, it's the five, called the current 2023 property tax digest and five year history of levy. And you see that at the top, the unincorporated value for real and personal property came in at 671,872,463. And then motor vehicles came in at, right at 5.7 million. Mobile homes were at 6,269,999. And then timber was at 134,928. Our gross digest therefore was 683,978,270. And exemptions did go up. Last year, they were at 157,000. This year, they're at 202,000, so, I'm sorry, 157 million, 202 million this year, so they, the total was 202,539,328. That's a lot of exemptions. As it's been stated by several in the community and government, if there were no exemptions at all, you know, the milit rate would naturally fall, but that's not the case. Georgia does allow for several types of exemptions. And so then you deduct that, those exemptions from the gross digest, and our net digest value is 481,438,942. So in Georgia, we go by the mil, the mil being a thousandth. And so one mil in the unincorporated area is worth 481,438. Looking at the incorporated values, the real and personal property came in at 138,227,375. And then motor vehicle is eighty, 193,770. And then timber, I'm sorry, mobile homes came in at 91,624. And there was no timber. So the gross digest in the city was a hundred, and I say the city, the incorporated area of the county, which is the city, same as the city of Trenton, came in at 139,212,769. The incorporated area showed an exemption value of 31,271,248. Therefore, the net digest in the incorporated area was 107,941,521, which equates to one mil would be worth 107,941. The gross maintenance and operation milit rate therefore is actually 15.0668 mils. That's for county and incorporated and unincorporated. But when you take back the rollbacks, which we talked about last couple of meetings, public hearings, I should say, the lost ratio is the local option sales tax that's collected. And then the other part is the insurance premium tax. Those two things, those two items, revenues are directly deposited into the general fund, so they directly offset the milit rate. And this year, they calculate to be 7.0668 mils. So you take the gross maintenance and operation milit at 15.0668 mils, subtract 7.0668, and you get the proposed milit rate of 8.000 mils. That's in the unincorporated. Incorporated is, again, you start at 15.0668. And then the incorporated area, the only rollback we have available is the local option sales tax, because the city gets their other, the other things and puts it through their department, not the county. And so that equates to 4.8478 mils, which is the lost op, uh, sales tax ratio. And therefore there, you deduct that from that 15.0668, and you get the net milit rate of 10.219. And that is estimated to produce 1,103,054, and fifty-four dollars. So combined, the total digest is 589,380,463. Or looking at it from a millage standpoint, one mil is worth 589,380. And that is projected to produce 4,954,566. And that is how you, that's, that's how we calculate. That's, that's the numbers that the digest produced this year, and then the tab three and four in your books there, which is how the milit rate rollback is calculated for the state of Georgia. It's the same numbers for the unincorporated and the incorporated. They do break out real and personal property. But again, it's the same exact values as reported on the five-year history. And the state of Georgia says our rollback rate would be 7.358, and that's if we take all the growth and then sprinkle it among, I say sprinkle it among all the other taxpayers, property taxpayers, and that's what the new rate would be, 7.358. That would be not accepting any growth. But, so that compared to our proposed milit rate of eight is an eight point seven three mil increase from the rollback rate. You have to remember, our, we've never been at the rollback rate technically. We, we were at eight mils last year, eight mils the prior year, I think eight point, almost eight mils the prior year before that. I think it was eight point zero zero seven. So for three years in a row. And then the, the next one is the incorporated, it's the same thing as the unincorporated. You just take, at that rate, the rollback milit rate is 9.555. And that again, is if we were not to accept any growth, we would roll that to 9.555. But the milit rate last year in the incorporated area, or I should say, yeah, last year, 2022's milit rate, what we've been operating under has been 10.554. What we're proposing actually is 10.219. So that is a reduction, 0.445, I think, I'd have to look again. And, but again, the state says, no, you have to compare that to what it would be, the rollback rate at 9.555. So our milit rate at 10.219 would be a 6.95% increase. So that's where those percentages came from that you saw in the newspaper. We don't necessarily agree with that, but that is the law, so that's what we had to do. And I did say that wrong. The decrease actually is 0.334 mils, 0.334. That's from 10.554 last year to 10.219 proposed this year.
Okay. Paula, do you want to maybe just give a brief, just a comment of your role in this as far as, you know, the appraisal? And I'll let, I'll let Angie just say a few words. I mean, you're here and, and you're, Angie's a constitutional office elected official, and Paula, you know, you're the director over the office in there, so I know some people, I know you've had a lot of people, and I've had people, but, you know, how you determine, you know, the, the increase on the property value, you know, if you just, you know, because that was a big deal there, and it is a big deal. So could you just kind of touch this lightly on it? I mean.
Sure. Speaking of, you know, what we are required to do by the state of Georgia is to set a fair market value for all properties in the county, all classes of property, which there are four, residential, industrial, commercial, and agricultural. So for each four of those classes, we're required each year to set a fair market value. And the only way to truly get a market value is to study the market. And we only study the market within Dade County. We do not go outside of Dade County to pull values. Maybe for commercial, we might have to, to pull some comparables there. But every year, we do that. We study the market every year, and there are statistical numbers that we have to measure up that determine and tell us whether we are in line with the market value or whether we are low or high. So based on the sales that we pull at the beginning of the year, we, we do all kinds of sales studies on all the classes of property, residential properties, vacant properties, large tracts, and what we, the information that we pull in and the numbers that we're looking at, that's where we determine whether there needs to be a change or not. So once we get that number, and then comes the process of figuring out what exactly is the problem, why are we low or why are we too high? And then we start digging into that, and, you know, it could be the dollar per square foot on homes, it could be, you know, this subdivision might need to, we might need to increase or decrease their lot values, large tracts, you know, might just be way off, and we just got to, you know, bring that in to the market range. So that's the basis of how we set fair market values, is based on the market within our county. And I'm like, I think we've talked about several times, the market the last three years has just continued to climb in this county, and that's why the last three years we have had to increase property values. And when we talk about growth, growth is basically any inflationary changes we have to make, which would be, you know, changing the dollar per square foot, changing the dollar per acre. And then real growth would be anything you add to the property or a new construction, that's what's considered real growth. There were 117 new homes either completed or began to be built in 2022. So, you know, that added.
Seventeen, is that what you?
Hundred and seventeen.
Yeah.
So when we talk about growth, and, you know, the county talks about growth, that's what we're talking about. Anything that added value to the digest that was not there the previous year, that's what's your growth. And just to give a brief definition of what is the digest, you know, people think, well, what is the digest? What does that mean? The digest is just basically the value of the county, you know, in dollar, in terms of dollars. How much is the county worth? Personal property, real property, mobile homes, motor vehicles, how much with all that together is the county worth? What is our value? And that, that's what the digest is, and that's why it's an important number, you know, when, when we're coming up here to set milit rates and things like that. And that's why we need to make sure, you know, we're the first step. So we need to make sure that we're doing our jobs correctly, we're doing them accurately, we're doing them uniformly, because, you know, if we're off, if we're wrong, then, then it messes with every other, you know, process that has to take place, you know, after we submit the digest. So, you know, we, we are very, you know, we, we want to make sure we're following the law, first of all, and that we make sure that our numbers produce the assessments that we're looking for. And, and then we, you know, do send out the assessment notices, so everybody is aware of what your taxable value is for that year, and to give you the opportunity to file that appeal or just to come in and talk to us, you know, let us show you where we got that value from. And, you know, we'd be more, we're always, want people to come in and talk to us. And there's one other thing.
How many, how many have we got still not settled? I mean, how many went to the, the?
We have about a hundred going to the BOE.
Okay, a hundred, okay.
Yeah. We settled about 200 of them. We had a little over 300.
Yeah.
But, but, you know, we were able to work through.
One time you told me it was over 300, that's.
Yeah.
Oh, most of these, I know you may, but, are most of them pretty large tracts or it's kind of divided up?
Not really. Most of the ones that, that we don't have any issue changing or reviewing is if it's an issue of condition, that we just don't know something about the house, or maybe we've got a factual error, maybe it's not sketched correctly, you know, things like that. So that's why, you know, we do have our website that you can go to, look at your property, make sure everything's factually correct. If it's not, you know, come in and let us know. We, we've had to change acreage, you know, those people have had their property surveyed, so the survey may show a different acreage than what we've got. So, you know, those are factual things that are, that are, you know, that are our responsibility to change, you know, if you can provide that information. And since we do not go into the houses and people aren't home most of the time, you know, we, we just don't know what's going on inside the house. So there's definitely issues that, you know, we want to bring to our attention, and, and we're more than happy to look at that and review that.
You don't go into houses, but what, can you go, I mean, like, if you're invited to, for someone to say, look, this basement is not finished, you got me, so it's, it's legal for you to come in and you can look and.
Absolutely.
Or if it's got, you got it down to the full bedroom, it's only a three bedroom.
That's right.
Yeah. I've had people ask me that, you know, before, I mean, you know, and some of them.
Yeah, there's no value for bedrooms, so.
And some of them said you went in anyway, but I know you didn't, you know, I mean.
No, no. We always knock on the door if no one's home, we leave a door hanger to let you know we've been there.
Yeah.
And, and when they're out in the field, you know, a lot of people think, well, great, now my property base is going to go up. Well, no, the field team is just data entry. They're just there to compare the records that we have.
Yeah.
You know, see if anything's changed on the property, and, and if anything's been added. That's all they do, take, update our photos, so that we have updated photos in our, in our system, you know, so that we can look at them in the, in the office. But that, that doesn't necessarily mean, you know, your property value is going to go up.
It protects them.
We're required by law to physically visit every property once every three years.
Yeah.
So, and we split the county up into three sections, so each year.
Third, third, third.
After three years, the whole county's been physically visited. Yeah.
And all this is handled, because I've had, you know, people ask me this, you know, you, you sub very little out with what you do.
That's right.
When you say we, you're talking about that office and people you got working for you.
That's correct.
That's their job, and that's what y'all do.
That's correct. Most of the time, what we hire out for or have consultants come in is to help us do the sales ratio studies, and to make sure that, you know, we have a second set of eyes on what we're doing. And, you know, maybe they have additional information from, you know, that they've accumulated from other places. They can put reports, you know, things like that.
Yeah.
So we do, we do have help for that. We are a very small office, so, you know, any additional help that we can get like that is, is definitely, but we are the final say. You know, if I don't agree with, with anything they've done, you know, we'll, we'll change it.
My opinion of your tax assessor's office is your whole goal is uniformity.
That's correct.
To try to make sure people are all paying the same on the way they're.
That's right. And another thing to explain is we're what's called mass appraisers. Most people are familiar with the fee appraiser, you know, a fee appraiser comes out, you know, for bank loans or refinancing, things like that. They're only looking at your house, and they're bringing in comps, you know, just for your one house. Well, what we do as mass appraisers is we're valuing all the houses in the county, you know, using the same methodology. So, you know, I'm fair to admit that there's hits and misses along the way when you do stuff like that, when you're changing things all across the board. So that's why we encourage people, you know, please look at your, look on the website if you need to, come into the office and look at what we've got, you know, let us show you where we got it from, you know, because there are some, some issues when you have a mass change like that. So, so that's the difference in what we do and what a fee appraiser does.
Yeah.
Just to give a, a little info on that.
Tax commissioner, you got anything you want to add? I mean, just a brief, you know, I mean, people, a lot of people know what you do, a lot of people don't, but then it's, you know, it's in your ballpark then, you know, as far as what you do, so.
Yeah, as tax commissioner, I take the county's and the school's data and create the digest, create the bills, we do the billing and the collecting, and then we disperse out. That's, we don't help set values or milit rates, but we do the collection part of it.
Collection, yeah.
And one thing I did want to mention, the, the exemptions that are way up is due to the HTRG credit.
Which, to explain what that is.
That's the credit that the governor passed, he and the lawmakers, that it's a one-time exemption worth eighteen thousand dollar in fair market value to offset the cost for anyone who has a homesteaded bill. You'll get that credit one time this year. It is going to help a lot of people.
Yeah. And that's a one-time thing, and it's got to be, like, we, we talked about this the last couple of meetings, it's got to be people that, well, we've, it's in the system and file a homestead.
Yes, had to previously file.
Something you can come in and run in and do real quick and all that, so that's, eighteen thousand dollars.
Where you, where it's always two thousand, it's an additional eighteen thousand credit. So it will help a lot of people on their bill.
And that was supported or put and, and acted by the governor.
The general assembly.
The actual initiation.
And then checks will be given back by the state, made to disperse to the county and the school and the city, once all the forms are filed.
Was that eighteen thousand, was it across the board, over the whole state? It didn't matter where you lived or what size county you lived in? Is that what, is that the way it was? I, I read a little bit about it, but didn't.
It, everybody's the same.
Everybody, flat out eighteen thousand. Commissioner, you got anything?
Any idea what that would be worth on a hundred thousand dollar home?
Well, I'll, there again, that depends on what type exemption you have. If you have just the S1 exemption, it's going to be worth more money for you than it is a person who's got the educational exemptions, because they're already getting an exemption that may be eating up a lot of that. So it's, it's hard to say what any one person's is going to be. It's just going to depend on your exemption status.
You want to ask me a question, a comment to what they do, or anything you want, I mean, as far as the public hearing? Anything you want to add?
No, I'm going to talk before we vote, okay?
Robert?
Well, I appreciate Angie, I think she answered the question, I did, because when we look back at this five-year digest, the exemptions were seventy-five million, seven-hundred-thousand just five years ago. They're at two hundred and, I mean, not thousand, million, two hundred and two million now. And so that governor's thing is part of that, the reason it grew, the exemptions, which may be next year exemption go down unless there's something else in the pack that the governor would do to refund money back to taxpayers. But when we look at the fastest growing part of our, it looks like fastest growing part of our digest, it's the exemptions from year to year that people are, and they're entitled to. It's not something that's wrong, it's just you're sixty-five and five, we call it, and all this other stuff that, so, and that's where a lot of people need to realize, they say, well, why, my taxes are higher, and I live next door to. And that's where a lot of people need to realize, they say, well, why can't, my taxes are higher and I live next door to them. Well, I may have the school tax exemption, they may only be forty-five years old, they don't have that and can't have it till they're sixty-five, so. Just helping people understand why it's not across, you can do something across the board, but when it's finished with what you're saying, if all I have is a standard homestead exemption, I would get more of a break than I'll get because I do have the sixty-five and five and maybe there's military exemptions or farm exemptions or s, I don't know how many are they, but, uh, anyway, that just helps, should help people understand why two people living side by side don't have the same amount of taxes to pay because of those exemptions. That's it.
Okay, Ms. Wabber?
Um, kind of explain, and I don't know if I'm going to say it right, what, with the exemptions, what it does, like, what is it going to do with this eighteen hundred dollars for next year? Not saying it's going to come out, but what will it do to the digest?
We get reimbursed. So we get reimbursed for that directly through, uh, a check from, I can't say the governor's office, but from the Department of Revenue. Um, and it's based off the millage rate, whatever the millage rate is that we pass, they calculate based on our digest, that's how much we get. I mean, that's why it's setting the millage rates, I mean, that's why, I don't know how to say it. So the, whatever, if you reduce the millage rate back to the rollback, you will, we will not get as much on the HTRG as we would if we leave it at eight.
Right, okay.
And we had budgeted for use of that eight, you know, at eight meals originally, so.
And, and the exemptions affect the digest, is that correct? Because of all the different ones, it de, it determines what's being paid in and pe, being paid out, is that correct?
Clarify that for us, what?
Well, just, so all, all these different exemptions that we have, if we didn't have them, it would be more across the board and everybody's taxes would be more.
You made that comment, you know, we didn't have exemptions, Don, what did that equal? It was a tremendous amount, millage rate wise.
Oh, yeah, I mean, imagine taking, well, you'd be adding the two hundred, let's see, let me look at, uh, hold on.
Millage rate.
Yeah, I, I would imagine.
Like, our total exemptions for this, the, uh, unincorporated is two hundred two million, incorporated is thirty-one million. If you took, if they were just wiped out, which we're not advocating that, but if they were.
Yeah.
Then you could reduce your millage rate by, let's see, that's about two oh two, two thirty-four. About half a mill, at least.
But that's not, that's never happened in any county.
No, no, and it's not, and it's probably never going to happen.
That's just a if, yeah.
It's just saying, you know, if you reduce, if you take all the milage, all of those off, then you come up with, um, the millage rate would not be as high, because, you know, when somebody, if the cost is, you know, ten dollars and everybody's giving ten cents and then all of a sudden somebody's not giving anything, because we have the possibility this year with the HTRG coming at eighteen thousand dollars, if your, uh, assessed value comes in at eighteen thousand, you have a zero tax dollar bill.
Right, right.
But that's, but we will be getting that back, a portion of that back through the governor's HTRG. And I keep saying governors, but it's the general assemblies have blessed us with that.
Blessed. Thank you.
Okay. All right, if there's no further, uh, we'll go ahead and we'll adjourn the, uh, public hearing. And, uh, well, it's five thirty, we'll go ahead and go into our regular meeting, uh, and we'll go ahead and officially. Uh, this is a, I guess I need to go through the, it's not a regular call, this is a special call meeting, uh, of the county board of commissioners. And, um, this is, uh, the purpose is to, um, initiate and set the millage rate for twenty twenty-three and, uh, for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. And, um, of course, it's been, it's been posted, advertised, uh, in our paper and in the hallway. And at this time, I'll go ahead and come, ask for a roll call, uh, to make sure we do have a call. Mr. Lowery?
Here.
Mr. Hartline?
Here.
Mr. Goff?
Here.
Ms. Bradford?
Here.
And, uh, chair is present. Um, and, uh, as I said, uh, we are here tonight to, um, to vote, um, on our millage rate. And I'll go ahead and open it up to our commissioners for comments before I'll ask, uh, before I go into a vote. Uh, Mr. Lowery, you want to comment?
I'll wait to see what Phillip's got to say, if that's okay.
No, that's fine, Phillip.
Uh, I've sat through those last three meetings. At the first meeting, I did e, express my concerns to lower the millage rate. We did not do that. Um, we also have spent over, in our budget, we've got two hundred thousand in our budget, uh, coming out of our general fund, because we've overshot how much we're going to collect. Our budgets went up a million dollars, and these are all the reasons of why I'm going to vote the way I am. Our budgets went up a million dollars every year for the last three years. Y'all have discussed these tax exemptions we've got and how much they've went up. They went up about ninety thousand dollars. But if you take the amount that our property value has went up, it's about fifty million, it was ninety million. So we're still a plus or minus forty-five to fifty million that we've went up. The home prices has went up twenty-five to thirty percent. I know in the corporate world, if you give me a budget, I'm going to spend every penny in my budget. Uh, with that being said, when we take a vote, uh, these are the reasons that I'm going to vote the way I am. For the last three years, our values has went up, for the last three years, our, our budgets went up. And the citizens of the county cannot keep affording this, in my opinion. Not saying that y'all are doing a bad job on what y'all are doing as far as tax collection and assessing. We have to do what the state tells us, but at some point, we have to draw a line. And the values has went up so much in the last three years, it's killing the average person.
I agree with you on that, that's for sure. Mr. Goff?
I can agree with a lot of what Commissioner Hartline says, but also when we look at the, when we look at the exemptions and two things, we look at the exemptions growing and part of it is going to come back to the people. Uh, but, but secondly, it is the inflation. When we looked at inflation over the last three years nationwide, it's costing us more to do everything, to have the services we have. There's just no way around it, uh, whether or not it's keeping up with everything. And then you got, I think, uh, Paula said in her last meeting, there were a hundred and seventeen new houses last year that people have moved, and many have moved into the county and have built those houses, and that figures into the growth. So, you know, it's just to me, it, it, it is growth. It's that our county is growing one way or the other, and I am satisfied with the eight percent. We, we haven't gone up in three years on the millage rate. The growth has gone up and we accept the growth because at some point, we've got to offset the inflation that, that everything's causing. I know it's causing it at home, it's causing it at the grocery store, it's causing it at the gas station, uh, everything else, and even the cost of building a home. And, but people are selling homes for, uh, sometimes a lot more than you would have dreamed they could sell them for. That too figures into this equation, so, uh, I'm just satisfied with the eight percent myself.
Ms. Wabber?
Or the eight meals, excuse me.
Yeah, I, I wasn't going to correct you, eight meals.
Well, I, I agree with, with both, um, you know, I'm usually the last one to speak, but I agree with both. Um, I, I do think that, um, it's hard all over. Um, I don't think that it's just us, uh, I think it's, uh, nationwide. Um, and for the county to operate and do what it needs to do to make sure that, that we're safe and that, um, we have the equipment to, to make sure that, you know, ambulances are out where they need to be. Um, I mean, I know that I've had to use it in the past and I don't know what I would have done without it and the people that, that were there. Um, and it is unfortunate that we are where we are, but we should also be very lucky that we have been where we have been, um, for all the years that we have. Uh, and I, I am comfortable with the eight percent, um, knowing that we still are even a little behind, uh, with the eight percent. Uh, we're, we're lacking in many departments, uh, with employees, um, employee get, their pay rates are, are still lower. Um, and it's just, it's, it's hard. It's, it's hard to sit up here and make these decisions and it's hard to, because I, I mean, I, I pay taxes just like everybody else. I have three kids in school and, um, they drive cars and pay for gas and buy groceries and, and it's, um, it's, it's hard. It's, it, you know, I'm just like everybody else, so it's, it, it weighs on me to make, make these decisions that we make and, um, I'm pretty much.
Okay, all right. You know, Phillip, uh, hard head Hartline here, I'm just saying, and now he's a, he's a, he's a good man. He's here, he's established, his people go back pre-Civil War and mine go back a long way, all of us people. And, and, and he's coming from the right, he knows what he's talking about, I mean, it is, it's a, but we have, you know, and Robert mentioned inflation going up and all, but I'm going to tell you something. This year, you know, we are going to have to either look at, um, because only it's going to change. It's not going to change with those two women over there and it's not going, because we've still got those hundred-plus houses. We got that many more guarantees going to be built between now and that next time next year. And this property, these people coming here buying this property, it's not the county's Civil War and especially in Northwest Georgia, they're paying prices for this property, it's just unbelievable, I mean, just in the last two years. But, you know, we're going to have to either look at cutting services, you know, where are you going to get it? I mean, you're going to have to do, we're going to have to do from this day on into next year, and we're sitting here again looking at each other, the only way you're going to lower this millage rate, uh, we can't, we can't put a gate, I wish you could put a gate up out here, you know, and control, or draw a line on, say, okay, uh, you know, if you're from Oregon, California, whatever, no, you can't give five hundred thousand dollars for that hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar house and acre land. Can't do that, you know? I mean, it would be good to, to be able to control it because it's, it's really out of control and it's that way, and like I said, in all these other counties, because I go to my county meetings and, and it's not just us here, you know? Um, uh, we, I feel good that we can this year keep this at eight percent, eight percent.
Eight meals.
I wouldn't go to correct you. That gimmick, uh, and, uh, and, and what Phillip's saying true, and I every votes, I mean, that's his, and, and I, you know, but, uh, without cutting directly, immediately cutting service, I've went through this since the first meeting and I told, uh, Phillip, I went through every department, I went to the sheriff's department, that's where high big money's at, sheriff's department jail, everybody knows that. And it's really, you know, it's either, you know, he's going to either cut, cut a lot out of the jail budget or, or whatever, I mean, or cut deputies or whatever, that's the only way it's going to cut. But then you've got protection of people, you've got, you're pro, you know, prorated on, uh, you've got to have a sergeant on every shift, you've got to have so many deputies, you've got to have so many jailers, per captain in jail, you go, there's a lot put in that, you know? Uh, we've got a road department, you know, we do all, we, we operate on a fine string, you know, I mean, we, you can, if you don't believe that, come up here and look at what we do and how, and what we, how much, uh, bounty you get for your buck on this, uh, on our paving and our being out there working. You know, we work with, uh, eight people, eight and a half people, call it what you want, but, you know, a few years ago, we had fifteen there, you know? So we cut and cut back on that. Uh, but, and anyway, I, I can talk all night, but, you know, I don't, I, I mean, I feel good at, uh, that we're here and we can keep this at eight percent and we're not looking at a, a million dollar shortage or a half a million dollar shortage this year. But this, this next year, because there's a lot of things happened that different this year than were last year and it's all going up, 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 we're going to have to re, every department, not just the commission, every department, every constitutional officer, and they've always worked with us good and, and I feel they will, but we needed, we've got to preach this and, and from nine one one all the way up, our fire departments, the whole thing, we've got to really look at where we're going. And, uh, one day, uh, we're going to wind up if we keep going, and not just us, but I'm talking about Raven County, Al County. It's going to be hard for the average person that's been here all their life to even afford to pay their taxes, much less even after they're retired. Uh, you know, if it keeps going up, and Raven County, for instance, up there, it's got to a point up there. Most of the people you see there and people on their board, and that's a small county like that, it's, it's right on the corner up there in the corner of Georgia. Uh, they're not, they're not people that's lived there all their life. Those families have gone and moved out and they died, not only died out, but their, their children's raised up and they moved out because they can't afford to live there. They can't afford to pay their taxes, you know? And, and because of the cost of the properties went up and just the same thing that's happening here happened there several years ago. So, um, anyway, I've said enough and if you, you know, we, people know how to get ahold of us and they can comment to us and call and they've got our phone numbers and, and endorse their opinion, but when it comes down to it, between this point and next point of next year, um, we don't want to be looking here. I hope we can look at you and, and, and at least go down, it may be a meal or two meals on our taxes. I mean, I hope I can do that, I mean, because I pay taxes too. You don't believe it, look it up, it's open records, I mean, all of us do. And, uh, I don't, I'm going to live here till I die, I don't want anywhere. And I just hope that my grandkids and my kids can say that, you know, I mean, twenty years from now. And it all relates on this right here now of what we're doing for the future. I mean, it's what, it's our job, we're the governing authority, so, uh.
Well, and, I mean, that's too why people are moving into this county, so.
Yeah, it is, I mean, it's just.
It's, um.
Well, for, for me, it's a two-part process and right now, the only part I can control is what we're fixing to do. The other part's going to have to be at a state level to where they do not allow people that's lived here, their houses to go up twenty-five and thirty percent in one year. There should be a max on the value that your house goes up when you're not moving. I understand if I come in and buy a new home for five hundred thousand, that's my taxes, but if we've lived, but if I lived across the road and I didn't give it a hundred thousand and it goes up four hundred in one year, I, we, that's the issue, so it's, I can either do here or at a state level. So right now, all I can do is here.
But right here, right now, if you have the home value freeze and you're, and you go up, your home value goes up two hundred thousand dollars from last year, you'll, you'll pay, you'll pay on last year's values, not that two hundred thousand, unless you do some kind of a major improvement. You'll be taxed on what your home's been valued at from the day you signed up for the tax exemption freeze. And I signed up ten years ago, mine's, mine's not went up. The value goes up on when you get your statement, but they, but you pay on what it was froze, the frozen value. Now, with me and Ted and Alan Bradford and who I was with us on that, Rex Levens, he wasn't for it. But, remember, he got mad and.
Yeah.
Said, "President left," and I love Rex Levens to death.
And he had a right to do that, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, he had a right, because we all get a stated opinion, it's, I like everybody up here, I've, I've said that time and time again, but. I think if you're going to say you're not going to vote for this, and I'm talking to Phillip and he, me and Phillip's, I think we're friends, like everybody, I consider everybody up here a friend. I think you ought to be willing to say where those cuts are going to come from. Because this state of fact, you can't cut across the board, it's illegal to cut, just go across the board and say, okay, we're going to cut everybody two percent. And we're being warned right now by the public defender's office. It's the public defender, the ones that are telling us, they can't hire attorneys now to fill those positions.
The DA and the public defender, DA and the public defender.
Yeah, and the public defenders. So, yeah, we're going to be, we're looking at some hard times coming soon. Don told us, kind of to my surprise, but we've missed our mark for the last two years on our, on our revenues. But we missed it, but we come, but we missed it, so that's got to come out of our fund balance. And we're carrying, uh, we're carrying a lot of debt. So, yes, I'm, I'm very concerned about it, I'm not sure what the answers are. The, uh, just like the transfer station, my husband and Phillip was sitting there looking at it. Just to how the trash office went up a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars estimated for this next year. That's just to get rid of the trash, that's not paying employees, they're, that's just landfill fees. So where's that money going to come from? We're lucky that we've got enough growth that is coming from that. It's not going to keep going. There's going to be some bad, rough decisions, like in two thousand and eight when I was in here, we were out of fund balance. We were cutting everything. We were furloughing employees. We were shutting library down so many days a week. It's, I think, and I'm afraid we're headed, I think we're headed that way again.
It's bonkers, really.
But, so we're lucky this year, but it, it, it's not looking good, the economic. Somebody asked me, how could, how'd you go up a million dollars? I said, well, what department do you want to look at and talk to about it? And they just look at the overall number, but I just pointed out a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars just for trash service. And there comes Captain Chambers in, he, he's warned us time and time again, the mental health. In the jails, something's got to give. And the state's not filling in. And like Phillip said, at the state level, I, I'd like to see as our splosh tax change because a lot of people don't understand. Some people love the animal shelter, some hate it. But it was voted on by the people on a ballot. We had no choice now but to build an animal shelter. We can, we can cut it back or enlarge it, but we've got to build an animal shelter and satisfy the splosh tax. Now, we, the splosh taxes where you could vote for what you want and leave out what you don't want, but it's not that way. It's not a choice.
And we're late, we're late on that too, so that's behind.
You say we're late on it?
Well, we're behind on getting it built. I mean, it's been voted on for a while.
It's been voted on three or four splosh ago.
Contingent on the money, when you could, you know, when it's forward and after you don't.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's what I mean, when you can afford it. And it's, it's still not affordable.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's forward time.
But I'm going to vote, I'm going, of course, I'm going to vote for the eight percent. I think we're lucky that we've got enough growth to cover it this year, but pre-warned and cuts are, cuts are coming. There's going to be, there's going to be no choice. It may be, it may be tax increases and cuts. Because you can't keep paying what's happening at your house. How many people are here paying more for groceries than you did a year ago? A lot more than you did two years ago. And we can't just, you can say, well, we're going to run it like, you need to run it like we run our home. If it, stuff goes up, you've got to cut something out. This ain't our home. If, if there's a jail inmate that has a medical condition and his prescriptions, his healthcare, we're, we're responsible for it. Like it, hate it. We can't say we're only, we're not going to feed the prisoners but once a day, the inmates. We're only going to feed them once a day. No, we're mandated what we had to feed them. They get like a school lunch, right? They have to be, has to be the certain amount of calories. And that's, and that's only decent society to do that because some of those people, they've just made a mistake. And we've all made them. They did treated, they deserve to be treated decently and fed decently so they can pay their debt back to society. I don't know what the answer is, but I, none of us want to vote for tax increases. But we also don't want to do stuff that we know, I think we know we're fixing to happen. We can't keep, we can't keep going up two hundred thousand dollars on landfills and not having some kind of revenue to cover that. It's either got to come from property taxes or it's got to come from fees, duh duh. I should, I know, there's more I could keep talking about.
Oh, yeah, we could go on and on.
It's complicated, I did, but.
But we'll go ahead and I'll go ahead and like I said, we're here to set our military rate and right now, eight mil, that's what it looks like. So we'll, we'll actually, we'll head and call a vote on it. Do I have a motion to pass, or set our military rate, eight mil, compared to the same from last year for the twenty-twenty-three year? Do I have a motion on the eight mil?
I move.
All right, I have a second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. We'll wait and call a vote. Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Goff?
Yes.
Hartline?
No.
Okay, and Mr. Lowery?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, any more comment? No, I entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, call a vote. Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Hartline?
Yes.
Lowery?
Yes.
And Chair goes yes. And also on the eight mil, I did vote yes, I think I did, I'm going to tell myself.
I don't think you voted.
You sustained.
No, I'm proud of it, I reckon, my. Anyway, appreciate everyone tuning in out there and watching our meeting and it'll be played over, you know, okay, when you missed anything and we'll watch it. But I appreciate my commissioners and I appreciate all of our staff, Don, Becca, everyone involved, and our constitutional officers and our elected officials, also Paula and all that, all the group back there, they worked hard. But like I said, this next year, I'll make it just real short, we're going to, we're going to really tighten up. We got to, we got to either, because, you know, we don't need to get off in that direction. We've been here in the worst of times, I have, and, and Robert and, I mean, we've, we've been in this county with some of the worst times it's ever been through in the years that we've been here, you know? And we're not going to go backwards, we're not going to do that, that's not going, that's not going to happen. We can't let that happen and because right now, we're really in good shape compared to what we were back then. It's just, it was scary times. So anyway, appreciate everyone. If you've got any questions, just give us a call. We all answer phones, come in our office, it's an open door policy. And appreciate everyone. So we'll head and turn the meeting.